Surrounding the fire and subsequent total constructive loss of the small passenger vessel Spirit of Norfolk on June 7, 2022, while transiting the Elizabeth River near the Norfolk Navy Base in Norfolk, Virginia. The other members that make up this district formal team include Lieutenant Commander Nicole Emmons, Mr. Keith Fawcett, and Lieutenant Commander Select Thomas Whelan, who also serves as the recorder for this investigation. The legal counsel to this team is Commander Select Karen Lee. Technical advisors to this investigation are Commander Eric Roy and Mr. Travis Taylor. This team's media liaison is Lieutenant Commander Catherine Blue. Upon completion of the investigation, the team will submit its reports of findings, analysis, conclusions, and recommendations to the Fifth District Commander. The National Transportation Safety Board is also participating in this hearing. Mr. Michael Carr is the investigator in charge for the NTSB's Spirit of Norfolk investigation, and he is here with us today. Witnesses are appearing during this proceeding to provide valuable information that will assist this investigation. We request that all members of the public be courteous to the witnesses and respect their right to privacy. The members of the press are welcome, and provisions have been made during the proceedings to allow the media to virtually attend this hearing. The news media may question witnesses concerning their testimony once I have released them from these proceedings. The investigation will determine as closely as possible the circumstances and factors that contributed to the incident so that the proper recommendations for the prevention of similar casualties may be made to include whether there is evidence that any act of misconduct, inattention to duty, negligence, or willful violation of the law on the part of any licensed or credentialed person contributed to this casualty, and whether there is evidence that any Coast Guard personnel or any representative or employee of any other government agency or any other person caused or contributed to the casualty. The hearing is expected to last until February 3, 2023, with the possibility that follow-on interviews and/or hearing dates may be necessary. If this isn't necessary, we will advertise those potential dates, including ensuring the availability of live stream, real-time viewing. The hearing will explore Coast Guard oversight, company oversight, Coast Guard response activities, professional mariner activities, and firefighting coordination. The hearing will also include a review of Coast Guard regulatory safety programs. The Coast Guard has designated parties in interest to this investigation. In Coast Guard Marine Casualty Investigations, a party in interest is an individual, organization, or other entity that, under the existing evidence or because of his or her position, may have been responsible for or contributed to the casualty. A party in interest may also be an individual, organization, or other entity having a direct interest in the investigation or demonstrating the potential for contributing significantly to the completeness of the investigation or otherwise enhancing the safety of life and property at sea through participation as a party in interest. All parties in interest have a statutory right to employ counsel, to represent them, to cross-examine witnesses, or call witnesses on their behalf. Witnesses who are not designated as parties in interest may be assisted by counsel for the purpose of advising them concerning their rights. However, such counsel is not permitted to examine or cross-examine other witnesses or otherwise participate in the investigation. I will now read the list of organizations and individuals whom I have previously designated as parties in interest. After I read the name of each organization or individual, I ask the lead representative to announce their appearance on behalf of their client. City Cruises?
Hi, my name is Eric Denly. I'm with City Cruises.
Thank you. Bay Diesel Solutions?
Good morning, Commander. My name is Chris Abel of Wilcox Savage, and I'm here in Norfolk. We represent Bay Power Solutions, which does business here as Bay Diesel.
Thank you. Captain Nadeau?
Good morning, Commander. I'm Delaney Delaney of Wilcox Savage.
Thank you. The district formal team will place all witnesses under oath. When testifying under oath, a witness is subject to the federal laws and penalties for perjury for making false statements under Title 18 United States Code, Section 1001. Penalties could include a fine of up to $250,000 or imprisonment up to five years or both. The sources of information to which this investigation will inquire are many and varied. Since the date of the casualty, the Coast Guard and NTSB have conducted substantial evidence collection activities. Some of that previously collected evidence will be considered during this hearing. Should any person have or believe he or she has information not brought forth but which might be of direct significance, that person is urged to bring that information to my attention by emailing d5publicaffairs@uscg.mil. The email address will be continuously monitored through the proceedings. Mr. Carr will now say a few words on behalf of the NTSB.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Mike Carr. I'm the investigator in charge for the National Transportation Safety Board for this investigation. The Safety Board is an independent federal agency which, under the Independent Safety Board Act of 1974, is required to determine the cause or probable cause of this accident, to issue a report of facts, conditions, and circumstances related to the accident, and to make recommendations for measures to prevent similar accidents. The Safety Board has joined this hearing to avoid duplicating the development of facts. Nevertheless, I do wish to point out that this does not preclude the Safety Board from developing additional information separately from this proceeding if that becomes necessary. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Safety Board will analyze the facts of this accident and determine the probable cause independently of the Coast Guard. At a future date, a separate report of the Safety Board's findings will be issued that will include our official determination of the probable cause of the accident. If appropriate, the Safety Board will issue recommendations to correct safety problems discovered during this investigation, and we may make some of these recommendations in advance of our final report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. The formal investigation team will now take the oath. The recorder, Lieutenant Whelan, has previously been sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that you will faithfully perform the duties and comment upon you as a member of this formal investigation, and that you will examine and inquire into the matter that is now before you without partialities or alibis? Thank you.
As previously mentioned, the Coast Guard has gathered extensive evidence and prepared numerous exhibits, some of which will be introduced in this hearing. The NTSB and parties in interest have reviewed the information contained in these exhibits, and the final decision on the creation of these exhibits rests with me, the lead investigating officer for this investigation. At this time, all exhibits will be admitted into the record. A complete list of the Coast Guard exhibits will be posted to the Coast Guard's External Affairs Site as well as the live stream site for the benefit of the public. Additional exhibits may be introduced during the hearing by any party to this investigation subject to my approval. This concludes my opening statement.
The vessel, Spirit of Norfolk, is officially covered by NTSB,编号 24. The vessel is registered in the United States. The timer served is 17 days after J and T L. Actual number of passengers, the vessel can carry about 600,000, up to 61,000, which includes marine crew and hospitality staff. The vessel is a full operator, also a crew stewardess, and a staff member. The vessel was delivered in 1992. The time applied is international time, which is post-time roll from 100% to 100%. The post-time regulatory is 1992. Take out all locker keys, table drawers, registered lights, 165. The vehicle fits up the vessel, receiving the depth of the vessel, 12 feet. The vessel was constructed of competent steel. The propulsion torque is 20, propellers, 88 baler ruster. The propulsion was achieved by 5 diesel engines. The fuel tank capacity is 10,000 gallons. This slide, this dimension related to the Spirit of Norfolk, ordered at 27,000 points. The Coast Guard, the Navy, the U.S. Coast Guard, the Treasury, and the Department of Defense, and the Department of Homeland Security, the vessel received 16 staff. All underway, our passengers are going to be 18,000. The fourth P D slide, over. There was a corporation, a market, a company, a corporation, a company, 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 a company,[1778.82]
Spirit of Norfolk, Coast Guard, Spirit of Norfolk, uh, no injuries, nobody in the water at this time. Investigators are out, uh, waiting back on a report.
At this time, I call Mr. Chris O'Neill, Marine Inspector Training Officer, Sector Virginia. Lieutenant Whalen will administer your oath and ask you some preliminary questions.
Mr. O'Neill, please raise your right hand. A false statement given to an agency of the United States is punishable by fine and/or imprisonment under eighteen U.S. Code one thousand and one. Knowing this, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Please be seated. Mr. O'Neill, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, Christopher Allen O'Neill, O apostrophe N E A L.
And please identify your counsel or representative if present and have them state and spell their last name as well as your firm or company relationship.
Lieutenant Helena Daniel, last name D A N I E L, Coast Guard Counsel.
Mr. O'Neill, please tell us what is your current employment and position?
I work for the United States Coast Guard.
In the, oh, sorry, I work for the United States Coast Guard. I'm the Marine Inspection Training Officer at Sector Virginia on two hundred Granby Street in Norfolk.
What are your general responsibilities in that job?
Sure, I oversee the, uh, training and qualifications for, uh, both new and, uh, current marine inspectors.
Can you briefly tell us your relevant work history?
I can. Uh, so I have, uh, do you want me to go all the way back to when I joined the Coast Guard or just for prevention experience specific?
Uh, specific to, uh, marine safety and prevention.
Sure, nineteen ninety-nine was my first prevention, uh, position. Uh, I was the Assistant, uh, Program Manager, National Program Manager for Commercial Fishing Vessel Safety. I was also performing some inspections at Baltimore at that time. Uh, and then I spent my next, um, I'd say fifteen years with the, uh, with Sector Virginia, uh, conducting inspections in both, uh, in Virginia Investigations and Waterways, uh, in the, um, area of Hampton Roads areas, and then also in, uh, North Carolina, uh, in the Outer Banks also, and the Eastern Shore, uh, up in Ocean City. I have about sixteen years of inspection, uh, experience along with another five of investigations and Waterways Management and aids to navigation buoys.
And what is your education related to your position?
Um, well, I have a master's in education, uh, in, um, both, uh, teaching leadership and, uh, curriculum and instruction development. Uh, I have a green belt in lean six sigma. I have PMP for program, uh, management, uh, also for, uh, projects, project management.
Do you hold any professional licenses or certificates related to your position?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. O'Neill, uh, all of my questions are going to be related to your job and background as well as your interactions with the passenger vessel Spirit of Norfolk, and focus on the period leading up to June seventh, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for being here, and we asked if you, if you need to take any breaks, please let us know. Uh, there is an exhibit binder available in front of you, and you've provided, been provided an exhibit list in advance. I'm going to go ahead and break your, uh, testimony up into three main parts, the first being questions pertaining to your background to include the Marine Inspector Training Officer Program. Then we will focus on Coast Guard Inspections Program, and finally, we will talk specifically about the Coast Guard Inspection of the Spirit of Norfolk. I have asked you some questions, uh, just previous as I was swearing you in. I would like to ask some follow-up questions with regards to those. Uh, before we begin, we please ask you refrain from using any acronyms. Can you please go a little bit further into your Coast Guard careers that relates to the marine safety, particularly with marine inspections?
Sure can. So in two thousand, uh, one, I was, uh, an apprentice marine inspector at then Marine Safety Office Hampton Roads. Uh, I began my inspection process working on port state and foreign freight, uh, which are foreign vessel inspections. Uh, I completed both of those qualifications, and then, uh, from there, I went down to, uh, Kalana Shipyard to work on small passenger vessel T, uh, and, uh, barge. I completed both of those qualifications. I was then, uh, placed to North Shipco, which is now BAE Systems, to work on, uh, dry dock and my major hull qualification, uh, and then also complete, uh, K. I completed those qualifications and then, uh, was placed into, uh, the Investigations Office, uh, in which I did, uh, two years, uh, of investigations. I then, uh, was, uh, sent to, uh, Lant Area over in, uh, in Portsmouth to be the, um, Lant Area Program Oversight for Investigations and Inspections. Um, from there, I went, uh, back to Sector Virginia as the, uh, then, the title was being moved to be the CID, but also was really the Domestic Vessel Branch Chief, uh, where I worked for Mr. Zahorsky, and I oversaw the, uh, domestic vessel inspections, also, uh, worked in foreign at the same time. I, uh, then in my last year there, uh, I was asked to, because of the Midtown Tunnel Construction Project by then Captain Little, the CO, to, uh, go and help manage that, beginning of that project for the Hampton, building of the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. So I was asked to go over to Waterways and, uh, work with the, uh, with the Navy and the construction folks, uh, for the closure and opening of the port and, uh, the construction site for the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. And then, uh, at that point, I made a decision to, uh, retire. I was offered, uh, a really good, uh, O-five position, but I had a kid in high school and a kid in middle school, so decided to retire. And, uh, I took a position, um, with Aton, uh, over in D-five, setting buoys for North Carolina and, uh, New Jersey, uh, area. Uh, did that for, uh, about a, uh, about a year until the Marine Inspection Training Officer position, uh, came open, then applied for that position, and got that position in September of two thousand thirteen. Uh, and I have been in that position since, which is now, uh, this will be my tenth, coming up on my tenth year.
And how has your training experience, um, and career prepared? And how has your training experience and career prepared you for the responsibilities and roles as the Marine Inspector Training Officer?
Sure, I think the first is to have the understanding of why we do what we do. It's very important from, to be able to protect passengers, to be able to protect the mariners in the environment, and that our job is very important. I'd say that's the first aspect. And then the second is to be, I consider myself a people person, and so you really get to know people and where they're at in their vessel inspection knowledge, their comfort with the public. And then you establish a training plan, and you help in coach and counsel and lead and teach and train them. So when they leave our office after three years or four years, not only are they better and they have more qualifications, but also that they understand the big picture of the Coast Guard and the, they have the ability to work independently at other units and represent the OCMI captain of the port wherever they go. I feel that, you know, had hundreds of people go through, you know, our program and other programs, I'm also the de facto Assistant National, Assistant MITO for the other twenty-two MITOs, and in putting together to ensure that we are consistent in how we train, what we train on, and then how we assess. So from a programmatic standpoint and from a personal standpoint, I feel that how I was brought up, I learned some good things, and you learn some things that you want to make a little, some changes and difference to. And luckily, I feel like I've been able to do that. Now, it's always a, it's always a continual learning process. We never, we're never fully there, especially when it comes to inspections. There are so many regulatory changes, you've got to keep up with a lot.
Can you go ahead and run us through the qualification process for domestic US flag vessels at Sector Virginia?
Absolutely can. And when you say Sector Virginia, it's national. So we have twenty-two feeder ports around the country, and how we, what our qualification process is, is very similar to what the rest of the country is, certainly with a couple of variances and differences based upon vessel types. But, so how, so it's changed a little bit over the past year and a half because of MIPSA, so would you let me to go through that? Or it's fairly similar, the only difference is, the first thirty days comparative to ninety days, we used to send people to Yorktown for five or six-week schools, and then now that's actually done in-house through what's called blended learning. It's structured on-the-job training, along with performance task checklists, along with some online learning, and that's a ninety-day process. So for the new people that have just reported in, in fact, this December, they're within that ninety-day process, they're doing that training. And then at the completion of that, they'll be assigned a qualification, they'll be assigned a mentor, and they'll be given an expectation date, along with their PQS. I know I'm not supposed to give acronyms, that's their performance standards, qualification standards. And each and every week, we, we meet and determine how far along they are, what inspections are going out on. And want me to fast forward a little bit, or go through each week, or how?
Just an overview.
Sure. Once they're, so during this process, they start off just leading basic portions of the exam, doing casework and paperwork, and as they progress, they're taking on more and more of the inspection. So usually at about the, I have about nine to ten years of data, so for T-boat, it takes about six and a half months to earn, so that's what their expectation letter is. Usually about the five-and-a-half-month mark, they're about ninety, ninety-five percent done their PQS, they're ready for what's called a checkride, and that is within policy, they do a checkride. And so if you were to equate a checkride to the public sector, it's a driving test where you're driving, and there's a instructor that's sitting there and watching you and assessing you, and that's what a checkride is. Checkrides are only done with people who are not only qualified, but also who are verifying officers, which means they have the ability to sign that PQS. And then they'll do a pre-board, and a pre-board is with three qualified, it's required for two, I usually have three in there. It's a good learning opportunity, and that's where they'll be asked questions about the vessel that they're trying to get qualified on. They'll have what's called lookups, if there's things they're not quite sure on, or there's things they need to get a little bit more knowledge on. And then the, the head person of that pre-board will then make a recommendation to me and to the SID as to whether that person's ready for a final board. And once that person's ready for a final board, usually about a three-to-four day gap in between, gives them enough time to study and to brush up on anything, they'll do their final board, and their final board will be with me and the SID and usually two other qualified. Policy requires three, we usually have four, because it's a great learning opportunity, especially for our junior officers and our new warrants, to be able to learn and hear what the process is. And then upon completion of that, upon that final board, obviously, they have to successfully pass, then I will draft the qualification letter and recommend to the Prevention Department Head and the SID that the OCMI captain of the port sign that person's letter for qualification. And then once that letter comes back, I enter that into TMT indirect access, which, if you will, gives them quote-unquote license to drive, means that they're capable of, they have the legal authority to be able to go out and conduct that vessel-type inspection. Once that, let me just-
Before you move on, you use the acronym SID twice, can you please tell us what it is for the record?
I sure can, that's the Chief of Inspection Department, and that is Mr. Zahorsky. He's a GS-13, he's been there for about fifteen years, and he's, he's in that position.
Okay.
He's who I work for, my direct supervisor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have any more for that question?
No, but the process is very similar for every other qualification, except for once you already have T. There are certain pieces of equipment that you've seen, and they'll start on their next vessel platform, many times in our port, it's ITV, towing vessels. And then they'll, they'll have a thirty-six-month plan, some will have a forty-eight-month plan, depending upon if they have a four-year tour or a three-year tour. Junior officers get three, warrant officers get, get four.
Now, does that plan differ for a person who has transferred in with a certain qualification?
It does.
And does that stand, what does that?
It does. So when, when people come in with qualifications, the, the Coast Guard policy is that they are technically decertified in those qualifications, even if they did an inspection on Friday in Holma, and they report to me in Sector Virginia on Monday, they're decertified, and they need to do a recertification process. So what we do with people that come in with previous qualifications is we first determine how long it's been since they've done the inspection. Did they just leave an inspection tour? Did they have a staff? Or did they have a grad school in between? And from there, we'll craft the recertification plan. And that entails first learning our, a little bit about our AOR, what our vessel types are. If you're, if you're coming from Miami, you probably haven't seen cold water, so you need to know the cold water, warm water designations and areas, what our local policies or SID notes are for anything, if there's anything that's specific to those, and then also the hull materials, vessel types, and then how we route our certificate of inspections, how the, the chain of command works for, for eight thirty-fives or deficiencies for calling, how vessels are scheduled. Usually for warrant officers, it takes about thirty days that just, when I say warrant officers, people that come in already with quals, that are coming right from a, another inspection tour, usually takes about thirty days for them to get qual, for, to get recertified. They also do a checkride, which I mentioned previous, for a qualification, they do the same thing for recertification. For people that, that have a gap, when I say a gap, that means they went to a staff tour, or they were in grad school, usually more about ninety days, because it's a little bit longer. And for foreign vessels in particular, we want to ensure that not only they know where all of our anchorages are, maybe they haven't seen coal, maybe they've just seen containers or roll-on, roll-off vessels, we want to make sure that they have a good understanding of what our world of work is. And then also, I want to make sure when I do a search of their, not search, but they provide their qualification letters, and I look to ensure nothing has been deferred. So items that are deferred, such as if you come from an area where there isn't cold water, maybe there's some cold water-specific lifesaving equipment that you haven't seen, so we'll make sure to get those things signed and trained before they get, they get recertified. Then I issue them a recertification letter, and that's signed by the Chief of Inspection Department. And sometimes that does entail us meeting with that person to kind of go through some questions, sometimes it's just the checkride, depending upon where they came from and what their level of experience is.
Who makes that determination on the prospective inspector's proficiency for recertification?
Sure, initial or after, or during the checkride.
Or a recertification process.
So the recertification process, it's between the Chief of Inspection Department, myself, and usually one of the other AJMI's, which is an advanced journeyman marine inspector. So in our case, it would be Ken Edmondson or an Aaron Wood, who are W4s and been doing this for a long time. We all kind of sit and meet and talk about the plan for that individual. When it comes to their actual exam and going out, we get feedback from each of the people that they go out with, and they're always verifying officers in the beginning, so that they can provide that assessment to how well they're doing, what they need to work on, and then we'll continue to craft that plan going forward. For the checkride, it's always done with a verifying officer, so that's someone who's already been vetted and meets the Coast Guard policy to be a verifying officer, and that person will then fill out a, a checkride verification off basically form, which has about fifteen questions. Did the, did the trainee or qualify clearly communicate to the mariner's expectations? Did they complete the inspection timely? Did they? So it goes through that, and then they get that feedback, and we all sit and meet.
So you had mentioned Coast Guard qualification letters, right? So we know that the Coast Guard documents qualification, correct? Does the Coast Guard document or measure proficiency for qualified marine inspectors?
There's no continual improvement for proficiency that is regularly utilized by me, no, but, or nationally that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. You had mentioned the term feeder port. Can you please tell us a little bit more about that, and how are they different from non-feeder ports?
Sure, I can. So there are currently twenty-two, there was twenty-one at the time I initially spoke with Charleston, has since been added. Feeder ports have been identified to have a variety of vessel types that help meet the journeyman marine inspector qualification requirements, meaning that they have a robust amount of both foreign and domestic vessel inspections, and they have enough volume to be able to support additional people for training. So once those, those ports were designated, I guess about eight or nine years ago, and with that, they received, each of those ports received extra folks who were qualified in order to be able to help absorb some of that training load. Each one of the feeder ports has a marine inspection training officer like myself to oversee the training program, and we as MITOs, we speak monthly and we meet twice a year. We're actually meeting next week in, in Texas City to ensure that we're being consistent in how we are qualifying folks and trends that we're seeing. So each of those apprentices, which I think there's three to four hundred, I don't have the exact number in my head, each one of us feeder ports receives so many of those, and usually we get those twice a year, we'll get them in December, January, and then we'll also get them in the June, July timeframe. And they're there for three, three-and-a-half years to just do that, to qualify.
Yeah. So you had mentioned the opportunities for Coast Guard, prospective Coast Guard inspectors to attain a certain number of qualifications.
That is correct.
Why is that important to the coast, to a Coast Guard officer with their career progression?
Sure, so the, there's a thing called Officer Specialty Codes. Officer Specialty Codes require four qualifications and thirty-six months of time in, in an inspection billet, and that, that specialty code, think of that as a, I can't say it's a bachelor's degree, but it's, it's a bachelor's degree, and they then do, are able to then do follow-on tours for waterways or IO, and it would be part of their promotion process to ensure that they have those qualifications at a minimum. And when they're sent to feeder port for apprentice, it's the expectation that they will receive those four qualifications, and those are what each of us MITOs map out for them. Now, some are able to obtain more, but the minimum is four.
Okay. Can you talk about the different levels of marine inspectors, such as apprentice marine inspector, journeyman marine inspector, advanced journeyman marine inspector, and master marine inspector?
I can. So apprentice marine inspector is designated as an apprentice marine inspector once they complete shipyard competent person course, a confined space entry course, and they're in a billet, and they've also completed, and I do not know the, the acronym for this, but OMSUP, it's their medic, they go for a separate medical exam where they do an assessment, because we do work environments where there's shipyards and there's possible exposure to chemicals, so they get that baseline. Once they've, once they've completed those, they're then apprentice marine inspectors. They're apprentice marine inspectors for thirty-six months, and then at the end of that thirty-six months, if they have four qualifications, they can be a journeyman marine inspector. To be an advanced journeyman, you need at least one major qualification, which is hull, machinery, dry dock, and I am not quite sure if MODU is on there or OSV, but I do know of those three definitively, I don't have the policy right in front of me. And then they have to have those be in a billet, an inspection billet, for three more years to be an advanced journeyman, once they complete those qualifications. Master marine inspector is when you have fifteen years of those and at least two major qualifications, and those decisions as to whether they meet that requirement is done through 741 and CVC and Headquarters. We don't make those designations for master marine inspector, so the traveling inspectors are involved with that also.
As the Marine Inspection Training Officer, are you also responsible for training Sector Virginia members on administrative policies, Coast Guard administrative policies?
Yes.
Such as missile and/or documentation?
Yes, I am.
I'd like to move into basically the Coast Guard's inspections Program, Sector Virginia inspections Policies and Procedures. In general numbers approximation is fine, how many domestic vessels are inspected under Sector Virginia Office of Marine Inspections?
I know we have a hundred small passenger vessels, I know we have probably about fifty ITVs, towing vessels, fifteen, probably somewhere between 175 and 225 range.
And how does that compare to other feeder ports?
I'd say it's on, it, it's about on average, I'd say we have a higher volume of deep draft vessels, because we have military sea lift command in the maritime administration vessels, which under an MOU, memorandum of understanding agreement, we conduct inspections for, for them, they're required to be Coast Guard inspected by their own, by their own asking. So we, I'd say we have a larger volume of, of deep draft than many other ports around the country, but I'd say about for small passenger vessels and for, for ITVs, we're about on average. We certainly don't have any offshore drilling units, because that's down in D8. We don't, we have cruise ships, but we certainly don't get as many as Fort Lauderdale or, or Miami or Tampa.
Is there a, is there ever, is there a certain time of the year that puts a strain on the marine inspection system with regard to qualified personnel available to conduct domestic vessel inspections?
No, I would, I would not say that it would, it would put a strain. We certainly have a distinct T-boat season, small passenger vessel T season, which really many of the vessel owners want to get their inspection between March, April, May, and June before or during, as to when a lot of the tourists are coming to Virginia Beach or to the Outer Banks or to the Eastern Shore. So that, that area, that time of year is usually a little busier, but it doesn't put a strain. We have a, a good contingency of civilian marine inspectors, along with our chief warrant officers, who are either on four or most of the time, five-year billets. So they, that provides us enough nucleus and foundation to build to conduct our inspections.
Is there ever a shortage of qualified inspectors at a unit that would require a non-qualified member to conduct an inspection?
At our port, we don't, we don't have that problem, no. We'll either reschedule or pull somebody from leave, or if it's a, a gas or a tank or chem that, we just didn't have somebody, but obviously, we do, we, the NCOE, National Center of Expertise, is always available to come and do an exam for us on, in our, in our port if we needed that. But we have not had to do that in my, in my time.
What is the tiered vessel system, and how is it used to manage risk in the Coast Guard?
Sure, so small passenger vessel T are under tier system, which was designed by CVC, and that's the, oof, send vessel compliance, it's up at, I'm sorry, Headquarters. I apologize. And they looked at all of the T-boats, small passenger vessel T-boats around the country, and created an algorithm to determine whether vessels were going to be a tier one, two, or three system. And that's based on many factors, but some of those are a number of passengers or routes, overnight accommodations, and they provide us with those tier systems, and then from there, that will determine what level of qualification we'll need people to have to be able to go out on those. So things that are tier one require an advanced journeyman, I believe, tier two is journeyman marine inspector, and tier three, I believe, is qualified. I would have to look at that, because I don't have that right in front of me, but we have a lieutenant that's in charge of all of our scheduling of inspections, and that person in conjunction with the SID will look at every one of the inspections, that is to ensure that we have the right people going out to be able to meet those inspections. that we have the right people going out to be able to meet those inspections.
So CVC is the Office of Commercial Vessel Compliance?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I apologize that I forgot that.
Was the Spirit of Norfolk a tier one vessel?
Yes, it was, sir.
Can you explain to me why it was?
Yes, it was the number of passengers.
Recorder, I'm going to ask Chief Doyle if he can please bring up Exhibit 078, a US Coast Guard tiered vessel inspection system flow chart. And it's also available to you, sir, in front of you.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to call your attention to the tier one, where the Spirit of Norfolk, where identifies the Spirit of Norfolk as a tier one, and why, how is that different from a tier two with regards to their inspection schedule?
Sure. It's for year three, which this inspection that I was the lead on was an expanded annual exam, which is different from a tier two, which would be an annual exam, which would be, I would say, not a spot check, but maybe you cover 50 to 75% of the items, whereas in an expanded exam, you're going to cover almost every one of the exams, every one of the items.
Okay. And does this added inspection, does it add additional demands to the inspection staff? And if so, how are these managed?
I would say not negatively, I would, I would say positively. As a feeder port in a training port, it's important for us to be able to teach and train, to be able to, for each of the items. So I would say most, if not all, the exams that we do are almost expanded exams from a training standpoint, but certainly for the Spirit of, Spirit of Norfolk for that inspection, we're, we usually cover all of the, the items that are on there. But it does, the expanded exam does certainly make it so that it is required, not just because you want to do it, but because it is federally required by policy to do it. So obviously, we're going to ensure that we have enough qualified people to go out.
Is there an additional demand at the sector with a tier one vessel requiring an advanced journeyman marine inspector as per the flow chart?
Yes. I mean, certainly every unit only has so many advanced journeymen. We are lucky that we have a civilian contingency along with some senior warrant officers, so we probably had four or five people at the time who were advanced journeymen. But I do know of many ports around the country that maybe only have one and then they have 30 or 40 T-boats that are in tier one, so that one or two people that have that certainly would be, but for our port specifically, we're, we're able to meet that.
Does Sector Virginia have a policy or guidance regarding scheduling of inspections, assigning inspectors and actions to take prior to the inspection? If so, please explain.
I would not say that there is a written policy that I'm aware of. Certainly there is in the, in MMS, which is our, basically our safety management system, our mission management system, which kind of flow charts out how inspections are, are scheduled. Our Chief of Inspections and myself meet with the scheduler often to ensure that we are putting the right inspectors on the right vessels. And then also for me specifically, I have at any time 10 to 20 inspectors who are qualifying, so I want to ensure that they're getting ample platform time out on those vessels. So, but from a, from a written policy, I'm not aware of one.
Does Sector Virginia utilize a shared inbox for correspondence between industry and the US Coast Guard inspectors? And if so, who has access to that account and who monitors?
Yes, they do. We all have access to it and the, the scheduler, otherwise known as the dispatcher oversees and manages those and tasks those things out. And then when that person's not in that seat, somebody else sits in that seat when they're on leave or they're out.
And is that the preferred method for industry to communicate with the inspection shop?
I would, I would say that they're, depending upon what industry is trying to, to get with us. If they're trying to schedule an inspection, certainly. If they're trying to get a deficiency cleared, then yes, but they can also, every one of our inspectors on an 835 form will provide their, their office number. Many times the, their government cell phone or the duty cell phone, there's always people that have that duty cell phone, both for qualified and trainees, so that cell phone moves from person to person every Tuesday. So if they call, it'll always have somebody there. We have many different ways for industry to be able to reach out to us so that we can provide the right customer service.